This conference will now be recorded.
I guess hopefully the connection stays on, so.
Healthy.
All right, are you able to hear me okay now?
Yes.
Okay, all right, I'll call the meeting to order. This is our Wednesday, October 28th, City Council meeting, virtual meeting again, and it's Jorge or when staff or is Matt put up the pledge allegiance and if everyone could be able to recite that to yourself in your homes. Thank you. Okay, thank you, except I can see some. Okay, are you able to still hear me? Put a thumbs up.
It's a delay. You have a delay.
Yeah, you guys' videos are. Okay, we'll try this. This is a proclamation this evening and it's for Extra Mile Day, November 1st, 2020. And whereas Albany is a community which acknowledges that a special vibrant. You know what? I forgot it. Yes, go ahead. Everyone's so blurry on me on their screens. Yes, thank you, Mike. Mary?
Dick Olson.
Here.
Mike Sykes.
I'm here.
Bessie Johnson.
Here.
Rich Kellum.
Here.
Alex Johnson II.
Here.
Bill Coburn.
Here.
Thank you.
Okay, I'm gonna try this again, but I don't know why I'm losing videos here, so. Mary, give me a thumbs up if I come in clear. Okay, yeah, I haven't had this happen before. So I can see it on the laptop, but it's the iPad. So, okay, do it again. Proclamation for Extra Mile Day, November 1st, 2020. Whereas Albany is a community which acknowledges that a special vibrancy exists within the entire community when individual citizens collectively go the extra mile in their personal effort, volunteerism, and service. And whereas Albany is a community which encourages its citizens to maximize their personal contribution to the community by giving of themselves wholeheartedly and with total effort, commitment, and conviction to their individual ambitions, family, friends, and community. And whereas Albany is a community which chooses to shine a light on and celebrate individuals and organizations within its community who go the extra mile in order to make a difference and lift up fellow members of their community. And whereas Albany acknowledges the mission of Extra Mile America to create 500 extra mile cities in America and is proud to support Extra Mile Day on November 1st of each year. Now therefore, I Sharon Canopa, Mayor of the City of Albany, do hereby proclaim November 1st, 2020 to be Extra Mile Day. And I urge each individual in the community to take time on this day to not.
Uh oh.
Lost you Sharon.
Yep.
I don't hear it either.
Neither. You guys sound good though.
You've gone away Sharon.
He's fading.
Mary, can you tell her we can't hear a thing?
We tried.
Oh, you couldn't hear?
No.
You heard about the first two thirds.
Oh darn. So you should have flagged me to stop. So can you hear it all? Did you hear it all?
I think most of it, yes. Other than the last sentence, yeah.
Okay, okay, it's still, videos now are clear. But there's three people, whoops, just lost it.
No, I read it.
Waiting to view, let's see, so far now, can you see me? Because now I've lost the whole screen.
I can hear you.
Now you're coming. Okay, there you are again.
It might be a problem with your internet bandwidth.
Yeah.
Might be too many things running there on the, using the internet.
Okay, on my end or your end Jorge?
It's on your end because all the rest of the folks I can see clear. It's just your video. You might be having more, you know, multiple devices running.
It was popping up that it wasn't picking up my internet. So for some reason, my wifi wasn't as strong coming through. Okay, there is three people though, I would like to recognize in the community. They don't know that I'm bringing their names up tonight, but one is Jill Van Buren. So she kind of established and was really a part of the Adopt a Park program. And I know all of you do know about the Adopt a Park program, but it's really kind of mobilizing and getting volunteers out there to be able to provide a lot of the maintenance in our parks. If we didn't have these volunteers, it would be such a bigger burden on our Parks Department that is already so spread thin on funding. So I just wanted, you know, all of us to acknowledge for the Adopt a Park program and thank Jill for taking the lead on that one and our overall Parks Department. There's another person in the community who goes that extra mile and that's Russell Hawk. Russell takes care of the riverfront along the Dave Clark Trail. He cleans up a lot of the homeless camps. He takes his boat down the river and cleans up debris and camps that pop up along the river. He does this almost weekly, if all year round. And a lot of people don't realize how much he goes that extra mile in the community. I saw a Facebook post today of a mattress and box spring right next to that riverbank. Once we get an inch of rain, that water's gonna go up and wash all that debris down the river. So, but, so yeah, if we can just kind of, you know, ever come across Russell cleaning up the riverfront, give him a big thank you. The other person is a lot of people don't realize is Bill Tally. He walks daily and he picks up garbage along Spring Hill, Hickory, North Albany Road, Quarry Road. He goes all the way down Lyons Alsworth Clear to the train station. One day he told me he walked almost eight miles picking up litter in our community. So, I mean, there's a lot of wonderful folks we have that do go that extra mile. And I just think that, you know, we need to keep them all in our thoughts and be, you know, grateful to the service that they provide for the city. Because if we didn't have those folks going that extra mile, what would our community look like today? So, but I just wanted to acknowledge those three folks in our community that really, really, you know, get down and get into the dirty, dirtiness of picking up garbage and needles and all kinds of stuff. So, so we want to thank Jill, Russell, and Bill. Okay. Next on that is business from the public. There wasn't anybody that had submitted to want to speak. And I don't know if there's anyone online. Looks like we have less people attending tonight. If there was someone from business from the public. Okay, not seeing anyone. And next then is a public hearing. And this is on our agenda this evening is a legislative public hearing regarding planning file CP 0220. The applicant is the City of Albany Community Development Department Planning Division. I call to order this legislative public hearing at 7:24 PM. If you wish to testify, there were two options available, which were described on the agenda. For all those wishing to testify, please be aware that you must raise an issue with enough detail to afford the council and parties an opportunity to respond to the issue if you later want to raise that issue on appeal. Testimony and evidence must be directed towards approval standards staff will describe or other criteria in the comprehensive plan or development code which you believe apply to the decision. If additional documents or evidence are provided by any party, the council may allow a continuance or leave the record open to allow the parties a reasonable opportunity to respond. Failure of the applicant to raise constitutional or other issues relating to proposed conditions of approval with enough detail to allow the local government or its designated to respond to the issue precludes an action for damages in circuit court. At this time, I call for the staff report from project planner Anne Catlin. Anne, there you are.
Thank you Sharon and thank you councilors. I do want to say thank you for funding studies because without the funding, we would not be where we are today. And they're really critical. So what are we doing today? Am I able to share my screen? Or Matt, are you able to put the presentation up on the screen? Okay.
Your presenter now.
Yeah.
All right, so I will share my screen. All right, the document is behind the, here it is. Okay, let me remove this one. Thank you for your patience. So tonight we are proposing amendments to the Albany Conference of Plan related to economic development and housing. So we are proposing to update chapters three, four, and 10 is actually a chapter that includes dated demographic information. So we are proposing to remove that chapter from the Conference of Plan. And then we propose to adopt three different documents as supporting documents to the Conference of Plan, which provided the background information for the updates to the plan. Those are the buildable lands inventory methodology and results, the economic opportunities analysis, and the housing and residential land needs assessment. And I will refer to these documents as, you know, the BLI, the EOA, or the HNA. I apologize for that, but they're, the names are fairly long. Okay, so. What are the goals of the project? We are trying to determine whether the city has enough buildable land within our city limits and urban growth boundary to accommodate growth for housing and employment out to 2040. This is a requirement of the statewide planning goals nine and 10. Goal nine is economic development and goal 10 is housing. And as I mentioned earlier, these studies are needed documents in order to do effective planning for facilities, for growth, for, for everything. And they are a requirement of our East Albany Plan, which that will get underway fairly soon. So anyway, these are long range documents that help us provide the data needed to make important policy decisions. And we did hire Johnson, sorry, Angelo Planning Group and Johnson Economics with the funding that you provided for this to prepare these documents. So the criteria for legislative amendment to the Conference of Plan, that the amendment is consistent with the goals and policies of the Conference of Plan, the statewide planning goals and any relevant area plan adopted by the city council, and a legislative amendment is needed to meet changing conditions or new laws. Well, if you've been in Albany for a while, you will know that we have not updated the Conference of Plan with a housing needs analysis or an economic opportunities analysis for quite some time. It was actually way back in 2007. So these documents and data are much needed. We are required to have a public participation process. And you may remember that we held a couple of meetings throughout the project. We talked to different stakeholders and we also provided notice in the paper and to agencies. And we have not received any comments from the most recent public notice and posting. So with that, I'll just describe some of the work that we are doing, that we have done and that is proposed to be adopted into the plan. So the first step is to do what we call a buildable land inventory. And the first step of that is to factor for any constraints, which are mostly environmental constraints, but also include things like the power and gas line easements. And you'll see most of these constraints are showing up in red on the map here. So we, we remove all of that land from what we call the inventory. And after doing that, we look at the development status of land. So we're trying to figure out of those remaining properties, which ones are buildable. And some of them are committed for public purposes. Some of them are too small to develop, et cetera. So we go through a process to figure out what land is available. And you'll see in the map here, and these are in your packet, but just for the, the public's benefit, the vacant and partially vacant land are shown in yellow or sort of a greenish yellow and a light orange color, mostly in East Albany, some in North Albany, and then around Oak Creek and South Albany. So the first chapter that I'll talk about is chapter three, and this is the economic development chapter of our Conference of Plan. And the content in the background section is proposed to be completely replaced with just a summary of the economic opportunities analysis. And I wanted to just talk a little bit about the process for how do we figure out how much land is available for future employment. And I think I skipped a slide. Yep, here we go. So we look at where the consultants looked at the city's economic trends. We look back several decades, try to figure out what industries are healthy and strong in Albany, which ones have a higher employment ratio to the nation overall. That's called a location quotient. And good news, we do have a really strong manufacturing sector and those happen to also be very good paying jobs. You'll see, just happens to be the table I put in the slide, that primary metals manufacturing hasn't a location quotient of 18.4. So the average, one would be the average if we had the average number of employees as other communities across the nation. But we have a much higher ratio than, than the nation. And you can see several manufacturing sectors are there at the top. So we're looking at our strongest industries and what are those industries' needs to grow in Albany. So this image, I think, does a good job of showing the whole process. And the analysis projects employment out 20 years. And then looking at the types of jobs and industries that would be coming to Albany or expanding in Albany, they convert that to the building types that they would use, like either office space or warehouse space. And then how much land those different building types will take up and what kinds of zones. So we are projected to add about 8,800 jobs out to 2040, which is, was quite a lot. This table here shows how the projected net job growth would be distributed over the different building types. And then we convert that to the actual land needs. So whoops, I think I skipped it again. Sorry, my, must be touching something. So we look at how much land do we have zoned to allow for these different types of uses and building types and found that we do have plenty of industrial land out to 2040 in the city limits, as well as an additional amount in the urban growth boundary. And the commercial total shows a negative number, but it's hard to count for some underutilized properties. And since we have enough land overall within the city limits and urban growth boundary, we can count some of the land that is dedicated for industrial to accommodate commercial. But unlike with the goal 10 housing, we are not required to have all of that land available for the next 20 years. So that's, that's good. And then what the goal nine language in the state law requires the analysis to do is also to look at the different site needs, looking specifically at the building sites by size and type, because industries are usually looking for parcels of an acre or five acres or 50 or more acres, that kind of thing. So the analysis looked at that for commercial type properties as well as industrial sites. And it's a fairly good match, but we are short on a couple of different sizes. And the analysis did find that in the short term, we do have an issue with some of our larger industrial properties because of wetlands and or access issues. So we will be looking at these issues when we get started with the East Albany Plan. And this data is going to be really helpful with them. So switching over to goal 10 housing, the housing needs analysis, similar process, we're looking to see whether the city has enough land to accommodate housing needs for 20 years. And in this case, we actually do need to show that we have enough land zone for those needs. So the first step again is to assess the existing conditions. So we're looking at demographics, you know, the age of the population, household size, incomes. Then we're also looking at the current housing inventory, the number of bedrooms, the type of housing, single family detached, rental ownership, that kind of thing, to see whether we are providing housing to meet the needs of current residents. So that's one of the first steps is, does the inventory actually meet our needs? And it's also looking at affordability. And that's a really big component of some of the statewide planning. Then we, the analysis projects the population and we did use two different numbers, but the number for projecting the future population, the required number is the Portland State University Population Projection, which estimates an average annual growth of 1.27%. But if we were to grow at the rate we have averaged back to 1992, that would be a higher rate. But by state law, we are only allowed to provide numbers to show the adopted population forecast. So if we were to grow at the projected 1.27% annual growth rate out to 2040, the analysis projects that we would need another 6,700 housing units. If we grow at that higher rate, it would be 9,400 units. So we're, just like jobs, we're going to be needing to add housing. And if you look in this table that I provided below, the analysis, and we're required to look at this, we look at what people can afford. So we're looking at the incomes again, bringing that in. If you have a certain income, what kind of housing type might you be able to afford to live in or to buy? So I think this table is really helpful. This is interesting data. It would be interesting to see how the House Bill 2001, the middle housing bill, when, when we look to complying with that, how that might bring some different housing types, increase our diversity, so that we can try to address the needs identified in this plan. But you'll see that we need 6,700 units and about 45% of those are, need to be affordable, affordable housing for those earning 80% or less immediate income. So just like we did with the goal nine analysis, we're looking to see whether we have enough residential land to accommodate this growth. And we're looking at low density, medium density, and high density land. And we are just a little short within the current city limits, but fortunately, we do have enough capacity with, within the urban growth boundary to accommodate our projected growth needs out to 2040. And that is a requirement that we have that land. If we do not show that we had enough land, we would need to also be looking at evaluating zone changes, that kind of thing. Unfortunately, we don't have to do that. But we are looking forward to future planning work. So I didn't go over details in the staff report, but it is a requirement that we do these analyses about every eight years. They are important for making sure the plan is current and responsive to our housing and employment needs. These numbers are really helpful when we, the city gets applications for zone changes and conference plan map amendments. And we just need to be able to plan for future growth all across the board with all of our facility planning. And with that, the proposed plan amendments are consistent with this, the goals and policies of the Conference of Plan and the statewide planning goals. And these review criteria have been satisfied. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Okay, any questions?
In the past, we've gotten the public together to talk about those kind of stuff. I don't recall having any public meetings where we've gotten together to talk about this kind of thing.
Yes. Sorry. Breaking up.
I think you're breaking up Anne.
Um, yes, there were two public meetings at different stages of the project. They were in November of last year.
You're not coming through.
They were in, the, the most recent one was in March before COVID hit. We actually got the meeting in early March.
How many people attended?
I'm gonna, I'm gonna try calling in, okay, so you can hear me?
Okay.
All right. Can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Sorry about that. We had a public meeting in November.
Through the House Bill 2001 work coming up, as well as the East Albany Plan. But this is really just the background data, collecting and assessing needs. But the policy work and figuring out how to address those needs is still to come.
Right. And then if, and then when it comes to, if we have to do any rezoning, that comes later too, to adjust to the numbers. Right.
But we don't need to do any rezoning right now. I think that it will be interesting to see what comes out of our required compliance with House Bill 2001, if a variety of housing units will help address some of those unmet needs. But the state did not have concerns with their housing needs analysis. And we're just ready to roll up our sleeves and use this information and figure out how to make sure that we are addressing those needs.
Okay, all right. I think Rich has a question.
Yes, and this information is great for providing information so we can comply with state law. And this, but if you're, if you're out there looking for someplace to cite something, is there a list of ready available industrial space or commercial space or that kind of thing? Because that's what, if you don't have that, they just walk past.
Yes. I'm sorry, where do you finish that? It's hard for me to know whether, I've got a delay. Yeah, so I will provide an answer, but you, you might also want to talk to Seth Sherry. But there, there is an industrial ready site list. It is maintained at the state and I think AMDEC maintains that website on behalf of the city, maintains the properties. It's a prospector, a property prospector site. But yes, this is really critical. Seth is working with our key industries, figuring out what their needs are for growing and expanding within the city, industries that, you know, that might want to locate Albany, what their needs are. It's not just land, it's also water, it's access, it's a lot of different things. So John Pascone is one of our primary contacts. And then of course, Seth here at the city to help realtors working with industries to locate in Albany. I'm not sure if I answered your question, but I did the best that I could, sorry.
Well, you gave me the answer that I thought I was gonna get. Anyway, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, if anyone wishes to enter an exhibit into the record. If anyone wishes to enter an exhibit into the record as part of your testimony, please briefly describe the exhibit and then email it to CDDAA, excuse me, CDAA@cityofalbany.net. Does anyone wish to testify on the proposed amendments? We did not have anybody that signed up before, and I don't know if I'm seeing anybody online. Okay. Does any staff, staff member wish to respond to anything else? Or is there any procedural questions that anybody has to raise at this time? Okay, nothing, counsel? All right, then I will declare the public hearing closed at 7:46 PM. And in counsel, there is an ordinance that is on, ordinance on page three or seven. Actually, Mary, I never got any of my numbers on my counsel packet, so I had to kind of guess on some of them, so. Would you like to have the?
Make a motion, the ordinance be read a second time?
Okay.
Second.
Okay. Have it, have it be read, okay? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Is this a first reading?
No, it hasn't been read yet.
Excuse me, the first reading does not require a motion. Sean Kidd, the city attorney, can just read it.
Correct. Yep. Okay, Sean?
All right, here we go. An ordinance amending ordinance number 4836, which adopted the City of Albany Comprehensive Plan by amending the Albany Comprehensive Plan text and adopting findings.
I'll make a motion, the ordinance be read a second time and title only.
A second.
Okay. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, aye?
I'm opposed. I'm hoping maybe Hasso can raise some interest in this. Maybe somebody will take a look at it. Maybe we'll get some comments on it. I hate to see 200 pages of this fine print stuff just cram through without any comment. So I'm voting no.
Okay, all right. So this will be held over to our next meeting for a second reading on that. Okay, all right, thank you, Ann. And you're not done yet, Ann. So next on your back page, counsel, is item B, and this is for the CARES Act CDVG amendments to the 2019 Action Plan. I'll open that public hearing at 7:48 PM. Ann?
Okay, thank you. I'll try to keep this short and simple. So back in April, we came to you with a first set of CARES Act funding of $220,804, and proposed that that funding be allocated to emergency food, small business assistance, emergency housing assistance, and a little bit for PPE COVID supplies for prevention. Well, we found out, just right after I was at the last council meeting in September, that we received a second act, second round of CARES Act funding through the Community Development Block Grant Program. And if you see on the screen, the numbers there are in red. So the way HUD wants us to process these grant requests is to combine all CARES Act money into one plan amendment, and that would be an amendment to our 2019 Action Plan. So you've already approved the first round of CARES Act funding, but we are combining a proposal for the second CARES Act funding. The total is $470,614. And so what you'll see in the exhibit to the resolution is the $470,000 number. But the details about that, we did have a competitive grant application process over the last couple of weeks, and we received applications from service agencies mostly. And the Community Development Commission met to review those applications and is recommending that most of the money, $229,000 about, be allocated to provide child care services and youth services, family support, crisis support, shelter support, and emergency food boxes and furniture. So those specific numbers are broken out on the screen for you. While they are not broken out in detail in the document, I want to provide those numbers for you in case you're interested. The Boys and Girls Club and the YMCA are receiving $20,000 each in 2020 funding that was set aside for childcare services, as well as the combined $55,000. And the Family True Relief Nursery will receive enough money to hire another staff person to help with families that are having a lot of issues and stressors over the pandemic. And then Helping Hands and Chance, Applied for Funds, Chance for Signs of Victory, so that they can have safe shelter and prevent the spread of COVID-19 in the shelters and at warming centers, and make sure that they're complying with CDC guidelines. And $6,000 will go to Furniture Share to distribute food and desks and tables that need it. So then $20,000 is set aside for business assistance, and I've been talking with Seth and a couple of others, going to try to figure out where the greatest need is for those funds. So essentially, that is what is being proposed, and we, I can entertain any questions.
Questions?
I have a question there.
Uh huh, yes.
This is the 2019 plan? I don't understand, didn't COVID start in 2020?
Yeah, it's a good question. I didn't go into that level of detail, but HUD said that we could add the CARES Act funding to an existing action plan, which would be the quickest way to do an amendment. So when we got our first round of CARES Act funding, that was the 2019 Action Plan. So it goes for the fiscal year, so through June 2020. And HUD only wants one amendment to one plan, all CARES Act money would go into one plan. So that means that the second CARES Act money, even though it's 2020, will be included as an amendment to the 2019 Action Plan.
Thank you, Ann, I appreciate that.
Okay, any other questions?
You'll?
Yep, Mike?
Tell me more about the Signs of Victory.
Yes. Chance is negotiating with Signs of Victory, and for now, they are working with them, but the, the funding would go for doing all sorts of things to provide safe shelter, adding more beds, converting possibly more space within the shelter for beds, and then doing cleaning, having different hand washing stations, that kind of thing. So
Who's going to control those funds? Who's controlling those? Chance's, Signs of Victory is not?
Yeah.
Thank you.
That's correct, that's correct.
Okay, any other questions?
Mayor, mayor, this is Peter here. Sorry, I can't see my hand, but I'm waving my hand.
A black screen.
Yeah. And Catlin made reference to AMDEC and to John Pascone. I just wanted to remind the council that we have a new relationship with AMDEC. So while we may have been used to relying upon John Pascone in the past for certain pieces of information, and we still have a relationship with him, we now no longer provide funding support for them. So we've taken on pretty much all of the previous tasking that we'd had, provided to him, and taken that in-house. So just to, just to make that clear for everybody.
Okay, thank you. All right, I don't see any other hands up. So with that, there was three comments that I think everybody received by email that was in support of the plan amendments. And was there anybody that was online that wanted to speak? Don't see any little screens popping up there. So Ann, did you have anything else you needed to relay to us?
No, thank you.
Okay, so there is a resolution that's on, I believe it's page 202. Counsel, what would you like to do?
Move to approve it.
I was second.
Okay, any discussion? Right, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, same sign? And you know what, I think I forgot to close the public hearing, 7:56 PM, Mary. Did she get that?
Yep.
Thank you.
All right, yep, and motion carried. Okay, thank you. Next is drop down to item number six, and this is on page 231. And this is the second reading of the ordinance, Sean?
There we go. All righty, let me drop down to page 231 real quick here.
And my computer could be off here.
231 is what I've got.
Okay.
Okay, an ordinance amending ordinance number 4441, which adopted the City of Albany Development Code by amending the Albany Development Code text and adopting findings.
I'll move for adoption ordinance. I'll second it.
They're second? All right. Any discussion? This is over the accessory dwelling units, text amendments.
Bessie's got a question.
Yeah, Bessie?
I mean, I was going through, going back and forth with paper. I just want to make sure that this does include the up to 900 square feet. I didn't see it actually listed, and so I just want to make sure that it's there. Did anyone else see it?
I didn't see it either.
Okay. I mean, to me, that should be in the actual ordinance, so.
Well, this is just the, this is just the ordinance, so it would be in your packet that you had. The findings were included in your September 21st agenda.
Yeah.
So it wasn't all?
Yeah, I went back to that, and I couldn't find it either because it was going to the Planning Commission, then it came back. And so it's been so many places, I just want to make sure. So Sean, is it there?
Well, I, I don't, I want to say yes, Counsel Johnson, but I, I am not looking at it. So I mean, I'm looking at what you're looking at. It is supposed to be there, it's intended to be there, and the 900 feet is intended to be part of this ordinance. Is David Martino on tonight?
Yes, I am, hello. Yes, that language, you would find in Exhibit A to that ordinance.
Unfortunately, it's there.
So where is it? I'm sorry.
I remember seeing it.
What page is that, David? Is it in this ordinance here?
No, it would be in your.
October 14th packet.
Okay.
But it is, it's 900 square feet or 50% of the gross floor area, whichever is less.
Okay, yes, because I missed that meeting, and so I went back, but I just didn't see it. So thank you, David, very much.
Oh, that's right.
Yep.
Any other questions? All right, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, same sign?
Yes, I am opposed, aye. And I hope the mayor will veto this again for, what is it, the third, fourth, or maybe the fifth time? And I hope somebody else on the council will join me in upholding your veto.
Well, it looks like it passed by 5-1, so that would not, that is not eligible for veto on that.
Since when is that?
Because the charter, the charter has to be, it'd have to be a 4-2 to be able to veto, 5-1 overrides a veto.
When, when, when was that? When was that passed?
Dick, that's been in our charter for years.
No, I don't think, I don't think so. Because I vetoed things and was against a five to one vote, and my veto didn't hold, but it had to be brought up again.
Yep, I guarantee that's charter, so you'll have to read it tonight, so, but that's a charter, so, yeah. Okay, all right, so that was 5-1. Next is adoption of an ordinance, this is amendment to the Central Albany Parking Area. This is, there's an ordinance on page 234. Do you have questions of staff for this? I think Chris Chendell is online.
Yes, I do, mayor.
Okay, yeah, Rich?
Yeah, I'd like to know. I see the, you know, we put in the, we put in the parking restrictions last time around. How is it working? And has this driven, has this driven people into the local neighborhoods?
I think Chris can respond, but it was in your staff report.
Yeah, so as long as you guys hear me. No, it didn't drive it into any of the surrounding neighborhoods. I ran all the crime types that we had in that area. Didn't see any large increases in any of the neighborhoods, especially at the volume we had near Signs of Victory. As far as did it work? The difference between call load in that area is down 55.4%, so that's a pretty big success. I've gone around to all the businesses, and they're all happy with it.
Okay, does that answer your question? Anybody else? Okay, Sean, there's a first reading on page 234.
Okay. An ordinance amending the Albany Municipal Code Title 13 by the revision of Chapter 13.21.112, Central Albany Parking Area.
I'll make a motion, the ordinance be read a second time and title only. I second that.
Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Okay, and second reading?
An ordinance amending the Albany Municipal Code Title 13 by the revision of Chapter 13.21.112, Central Albany Parking Area.
Make a motion for adoption. I'll second it.
Okay, any discussion? All right, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, same sign? Okay, motion carried. Next is item eight, we have award of contracts. So this looks like some compost, some dewatering, and consulting services. So which staff member is going to be on the lead for these contracts? Is it Stacy? Yes.
So good evening, mayor and counselors. I'm going to go ahead and cover, it's items 8A and B on the agenda. Staff is requesting that council waive competitive bidding and approve a special procurement process to obtain composting and dewatering equipment as outlined in the two memos that are found on pages 237 through 246 in the council packet. These are two separate requests, but the compost and dewatering projects are related. They both are going to be constructed at the Albany Millersburg Water Reclamation Facility. And in fact, we will be bidding them together as one project. So as council is aware, we've discussed this previously, but the process that's currently used at the city's wastewater treatment plant to reduce and stabilize biosolids doesn't work, and the solids have to be hauled off-site and disposed of at the landfill. This is an This is inexpensive, and it can also be a really odorous process. In addition, the plant's existing de-watering equipment, the belt filter presses, they're starting to fail, and the equipment's at the end of its useful life. About a year ago, we came to council and requesting that council approve contracts with Kennedy Janks to provide engineering services for the composting and de-watering improvements at the plant. The composting and de-watering projects will include construction of a small-scale composting facility that will produce a Class A biosolid that can be reused and won't have to be hauled off-site to a landfill. The de-watering improvements will include installation of new screw press de-watering equipment that will be located in an existing building. It's the solids de-watering building at the wastewater plant. Prior to design and even during design, staff, along with the consultant, conducted extensive research. Site visits were conducted, there were three pilot studies completed for the de-watering equipment. One pilot study was completed for the composting equipment. And this was to evaluate composting and de-watering equipment that would be compatible with the biosolids that were produced at the wastewater plant. In these memos, staff is requesting that council adopt the resolutions that are included as attachments and that would waive competitive bidding and approve a class special procurement method to obtain composting equipment from Engineered Compost Systems and screw press de-watering equipment from FKC Company. So Engineered Compost Systems, they're located in Seattle, Washington, and they are the only manufacturer that provides a composting system that will operate under both positive and negative airflow. Operating under the negative airflow allows odors to be captured and treated. So bad odors have been an issue with the plant because of the unstable solids that are produced. So this was a really important criteria in ultimately selecting ECS. The estimated cost of the ECS composting system is approximately $377,000. FKC is located in Port Angeles, Washington. They are the only manufacturer that met all the selection criteria, and they could provide screw press equipment that would fit within the existing solids de-watering building. The other screw press manufacturers that we looked at would have required additional equipment in order to accomplish the required throughput or de-watering that was needed to process the biosolids. The estimated cost of the FKC screw presses is approximately $789,000. The project manager, Nolan Nelson, shared with me today that the current schedule for this project is we are planning to advertise mid to late December. Bids would be opened in January, and then construction would start in May or June of 2021. The total estimated cost of the de-watering and composting project, inclusive of engineering, legal, administration, 10% contingency, and purchasing the ECS composting system equipment and FKC screw presses is approximately $9.2 million. This project is fully funded and is budgeted in the sewer systems capital project fund. I'd be happy to answer any questions if council has any.
Okay, yeah, Alex?
So what's the useful life of these machines?
Oh, wow, you got me there. I know that the, the design is for, I believe, I don't know, is Chris on? You know, Counselor Johnson, I'll have to get back to you on that.
I'm here, Stacy. Can you hear me? This is Chris Bailey. Hi, Counselor Johnson, I'm trying to turn my camera on. I wasn't expecting to have to talk, so I'm at a funny angle. The design life for the screw presses, I believe, is a 20-year life. It's typical what we expect from those. The, as an example, the belt filter presses that they're replacing were installed in around 1999, I think, 2000. And they're still running, although they're failing now. So we hope to get 20 years out of the presses. The composting equipment, I don't know that it, I don't know that it has a firm design life, but it's essentially a small-scale system, and we'll be adding to it over time. And so that will just sort of go, should go for quite a number of years.
Okay, another question, does it come with a preventive maintenance package or service package? Is that part of the contracting?
It does. So the project as a whole comes with a one-year warranty. But then in addition to that, the specific equipment that's going to be included with the package have separate warranties. One of the, one of the other reasons why we selected ECS and FKC is that they have a really good track record of providing support to their customers.
Will our existing staff be able to do the maintenance, or we have to contract that out?
Staff should be able to do routine maintenance.
Yeah, I think the composting system, for sure, we have the capacity to do that. That's just mostly pumps and electrical work. The screw presses might be a little more, some of the proprietary things, we might have to get a specialist to come in, but the general maintenance, routine maintenance, we could do.
Thank you.
Bessie, I think we lost you, but it looks like you got back on.
Yeah, I just, I mean, everything is garbled, and so I just went over to my iPad and off my computer. So I've only got five of you now.
Yeah, so what you missed is Stacy just did an update on items A and B, so, on that, but.
Yeah, I heard it somewhat, so I'm good.
Okay, so counsel, you do have your first resolutions on page 239. What would you like to do?
Move to approve.
Okay.
I'll second.
Okay, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Okay, motion carried. Next, you have a resolution on page 244. That's for the de-watering improvements.
Move to approve.
Second.
I'll second that as well.
Okay, motion's been made, a second, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Okay, motion carried. And then Stacy on consulting services for utility fee development.
That's not mine.
Hi, Mayor, that, that would actually be mine. This is Gina.
All right, so Gina, yeah, way different from public work, so, okay.
Right, so, you know, Peter has been talking about developing a utility fee plan, building the car, getting it ready to go, if council should choose to go that route. As part of that process, we need somebody to help guide us through that. And we would like to ask the council, acting as a local contract review board, to waive the competitive process and allow us to get services of Deb Gallardi and Gallardi Rothstein Group through a special procurement. The reason we want to do this is because Deb's extensive knowledge of the city's rate structure, she has helped develop, I think, all the other rate structures here at the city, the SDCs, parks, streets, all these stormwater. And so she knows our system inside and out. It will help us save money, we won't have to teach somebody about our current rate structures. She can jump in, and we'll be able to move forward with developing something much quicker than what we would otherwise.
Okay. Questions? Okay, if not, you have a resolution on page 249.
Move to adopt resolution.
Second.
Okay, motion's been made, a second, any discussion? All those.
I have a question for Gina.
Yep, uh-huh.
May I ask Gina a question?
Yes, uh-huh.
Are you taking into consideration the lower income and high-income person that people live in the city?
That will be part of the development of the rate structure. We, I'm sure that is something that we'll be looking at. It's, I believe it's a part of our other rate structures now.
Thank you.
Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign.
Aye.
Was that a no, Rich?
It was correct, it was a no.
All right, motion carried, 5 to 1.
Thank you.
Mayor, may I make a quick comment? If I, I think if I understood Counselor Johnson, the second's question, he asked if there was a low-income provision in, in the proposed structure, is that correct, Alex?
This is.
Yeah, and Gina's answer was correct, that, that provision already exists with our other utilities as well. And we have tried hard to make that known during the pandemic so that folks who are in difficulty can actually take advantage of that.
Thank you for the explanation, will do.
Okay, all right. Item number nine, this is City of Lebanon Biosolids Hauling Intergovernmental Agreement. And who's taking that lead?
Kristen here, can you guys hear me?
Yes. Hello, Kristen.
Great. Good evening, Mayor and Council. Tonight I'm talking about the emergency biosolids hauling intergovernmental agreement with the City of Lebanon for their excess solids. We've had an agreement with them for the last three years or so, but it's expired, and the City of Lebanon would like to renew it. Lebanon continues to need temporary disposal options for their excess biosolids due to capacity issues at their wastewater treatment plant and limitations on disposal options. City of Lebanon staff has recently taken over the operation and maintenance of their treatment plant from contract operations and are looking hard at longer-term solutions. But in the meantime, the Albany Millersburg Treatment Plant is still able to accept this limited amount of treated biosolids from Lebanon. So we've proposed an updated agreement with many of the same requirements on limitations of the quantity and quality of their biosolids. And we're proposing a three-year agreement to coincide with a three-year agreement that we have with Republic Services for disposal of our combined solids to the landfill. We've reviewed the costs and the proposed, have proposed an increase from $650 per dry ton to $670 per dry ton for the first year, and with an additional $20 per ton each subsequent year because we anticipate some increase in hauling and disposal fees. These costs include disposal, as well as our operational costs, including our labor, electricity, chemical usage, as well as an estimated cost for additional wear and tear on our equipment that you heard is aging. This agreement continues to give the city the option to refuse acceptance of the Lebanon solids due to odor issues, equipment breakdown, if we are overrun with solids or other reasons that we just can't accept their material. As far as budget impacts, we anticipated the need to continue this agreement with Lebanon as we prepared our current budget, so there are no budget impacts. So staff is recommending that we enter into an agreement with Lebanon to haul their excess solids from their treatment plant to the Albany WRF by adopting the attached resolution. And I think it's, starting on page 251, are there any questions?
Yes. Bessie, and then what?
Well, Kristen, I was wondering, again, this, apparently the contract has expired. Why we didn't hear, you know, get this beforehand, because this kind of, you know, I mean, this happens so often, and I just wondered, you know, could we get ahead of it, you know, and plan it? And then also, you say that we are, we're monitoring what kind of material we're getting, and have, has Lebanon had any, have there been any problems in getting their payments?
Okay, so as far as the expiration date, generally their issues for needing the hauling services have been the winter, so this is sort of anticipation of needing the service. They, they thought they had, I think they thought they had a solution, but they just, they want this as a backup. They may not end up needing to haul solids. Like, the first year of our agreement, they never even used the agreement.
Really?
Yep. Then the quality, we do monitor the quality, and there's been no issues with the quality of their biosolids, and they, you know, they've paid on time, so there's been no issues.
Great, thank you, Kristen.
You're welcome.
Yes, Kristen, you said that there was an adder of $20 for each year?
Yes.
Now, what happens if our costs go up more than that?
Well, we probably would revisit with them. We don't anticipate, I mean, I guess if the landfill came to us with an exorbitant cost increase, we would have to pass that on.
But this doesn't seem to allow it.
I'd have to review the ordinance. I'm not certain what would happen in that case, but I don't believe, we would not pass on, we wouldn't accept, you know, a loss on this. I mean, we're not here to finance the Lebanon Biosolids Program.
Counsel Kellen.
That's fine.
Counsel Kellen, this is Chris. I just say that the language in the agreement gives us quite a few options to refuse to accept the solids. So that's just another thing we could do, is just tell them we won't accept the solids if we can't renegotiate an appropriate rate.
Okay, thank you.
So is there cost of living, our cost of living increases that we have, is this added into their rate yearly? Because we have wage go up, we have everything else that goes.
Yeah, so that increase is not just, you know, a solids increase, it's, you know, an operational increase also.
Okay, good. Kate, Alex?
So my question is, you said $20 per year, $20 per ton every year, and it would increase. Is that, I'm thinking that number should go.
Well, we did, I think we did a good job in trying to estimate our costs. And that's just the number we came up with. I could get, you know, some more specifics on how we came up with those numbers.
I mean, I just, this $20 per ton per year, and my cost going to pick stuff to dump was up more than that in three years for public waste. So I just think that number's too low. I was, I was going with Counsel Kellen, I'd like to know, was he asking, I was going to ask, but my other question was, I think that cost is too low, and that we have to really increase $20 per ton. Where are there all the vehicles?
Counsel, Counsel Johnson, this is.
Yeah, can you get closer to your mic, Alex, when you speak? Yeah.
This is, I'm not sure if Scott LaRocque is on, but he did the calculations. And he looked at our, the cost increase, which included our operating cost.
And he looked at our, the cost increase, which included our operating costs per hour and, and how many hours it took us over the past years to handle the Lebanon bio solids, which was not a lot because they aren't bringing us a lot. And it's not a labor intensive process. And then he also looked at the increases that we got from the landfill and that were forecasted to, to get. And that's how we developed the, the increase every year. It also accounts for things that we don't, can't really itemize. So for instance, the additional power to pump is, we don't have that broken down in a, you know, a per ton or per gallon, but we have an estimator in there. So it's a pretty comprehensive rate. And, I mean, we can look again at the $20, but I feel confident that Scott did a good job finding all of the costs and rolling them up in there. And it's $20 per ton, not just $20.
No, I understand that. It is asking.
Yeah.
What I don't want, I don't want, my concern is, I just want Lebanon to get comfortable with us taking the rate and not resolving their problems.
No, that's not our intention at all. And we're monitoring that. As Kristen said, we are here to subsidize their treatment plant.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay. Any other questions? Yeah, Mike?
Kristen, is that a wet ton or a dry ton?
It's a dry ton.
So are they bringing it over to us wet or dry?
They're bringing it over to us wet, but we test their, each sample to get the percent solids consistency. So we know, you know, how much solids we're getting for the, for the wet delivery.
So.
And we're calculating a dry ton.
We're getting it wet and we're drying it and then sending it to the landfill. Is that correct?
We're de-watering it.
Correct.
Uh huh. But we're, we're, we're invoicing them for, you know, it's a, you know, for everything that they bring us.
David, you said it was on a dry ton, but they're bringing it to us wet.
And then we're calculating what the, the amount of solids is based on a percentage, you know, we, we analyze their, their wastes and we come up with the, the conversion.
From wet to dry?
Mm-hmm.
I think I'm leaning more, I think I'm, I think I'm leaning more towards what Alex said, that I think we're maybe low because that doesn't, if they're bringing it over to us wet, if, if they're bringing it to us wet and we're charging them when it's dry, there's a process in there and the, and the, and the the bio solids, I assume there's, there's moisture in there and that's eight pounds per gallon.
So it's not advantageous for them to bring it to us more wet? It's, you know, that would, that would take them, A, a lot more time and B, it, it wouldn't, you know, the, the amount of solids that we get in their, their truckloads, we can only de-water it to a certain point. So whether they bring us something that's really wet or a more dry, we still have to run it through our belt presses and we can only get it to a certain point. And we can only get so many, so many tons in a truck. So if they bring us 10 loads of truck material, that's 1% thickness versus one load at 5% thickness, it doesn't, it's the same amount of truckloads that we have to haul off because it's the same amount of solids contained within the, the liquid. Does that make any sense?
Yeah, you're basing it on the, yeah, you're basing it on the solids.
The vast majority of our costs is, is just associated with us hauling it to the dump itself.
But don't we still have costs on de-watering?
Very little.
Okay.
But those are wrapped up into the what we charge them. So we're charging them our actual disposal cost plus the cost for the de-watering, the polymer, the electric, the labor. It's rolled up into the total rate that we charge them.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Bill? Bill, do you see, have a question?
Well, I was just gonna comment, I think what staff has done, probably worked back. They knew how much they called to the dump and what those fees are and worked backwards to see what it took to process it to get it to where they could haul it out. Alex, you mentioned the increase of $20 a year. That is less than 3%. Somebody, it might have been Sharon, mentioned the cost of living. So I, I'm confident that, that staff has looked at all this, but it does seem a little low.
0.97. Less than 1%. Which is way under our resolution cost.
Okay. So what would, what does council want to do with this item? Did you want staff to come back with more information or there's a resolution on page 253?
Let's, let's hear the resolution.
I'll make a motion.
I missed that. There was a mo, who made the motion?
Bill did, Bill.
Okay.
Dick, Dick said, Dick seconded it.
Some reason everybody's starting to break up here on me.
Yeah.
Any discussion?
I just wanted to know, Bill, was your motion to just pass it as it is written without any changes now?
Yes. Correct.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
All those in favor say aye.
I would.
Or Rich, why?
I would say this, $20 is 1%, 0.97. That's less than our cost of increase of labor.
Yeah.
Now, this is not gonna be a big deal. As a thought process, we should recover what it's gonna be, not what, what the new contracts look like. What, well, PERS is gonna be so bad, but healthcare will probably eat us alive again. I would just assume see this come back with, with actual cost of living increase as an adder instead of 20 bucks. That's just.
Chris? Yeah. Thanks, mayor. So what I would say to that is, as Scott said, the vast majority of our costs associated with this work is in the landfill fees. There's a very tiny bit of additional labor on top of what staff is already doing to process Albany's bio solids that would go into processing the relatively small percent that we get from Lebanon. So Lebanon's total solids, when they haul to us, have been a fraction of the solids that we're producing and hauling to the landfill. And so it, it wouldn't really be fair to say to Lebanon, we're gonna raise your rates 14% because that's our labor rate that's going up when the labor is, the increase, marginal increase in labor to process their bio solids on top of ours is practically nothing. So, you know, I feel confident that we've analyzed this six ways from Sunday. If you would like us to go back and, and just change that number to something higher, we can. But we feel confident that we're gathering all of our costs from this, you know, through the price agreement that we've set up.
So the only thing that I, see, you know me, I've always been one way. It's other cities that were providing a service that we need that full cost recovery. So it's not just the piece of our plant that we're de-watering because it's basically the overall plant that exists itself. They're, they're benefiting from that service. We don't have just a de-watering facility. We have a whole complete wastewater treatment plant. So there's kind of all those costs associated, including administration, in providing this service. So I can see where the cost of living should be added to it because it's not just the de-watering piece. They wouldn't get their de-watering if it wasn't for our whole wastewater treatment plant. The whole.
Yeah, mayor, I would just, I would just let you know that it's not, when they bring a truckload, it doesn't go into our headworks. They're, what they're bringing to us is actually Class B bio solids. It's better treated than what we can do at our plant. And we add it to the system right before it gets pumped over to the de-watering equipment. So it's really, literally is only going through the de-watering and the hauling. It's not being treated at our plant. It's already been fully treated at their plant. It's the same bio solids they can land apply on their approved fields in the summer. They just can't land apply in the winter. So this is one of the options that they have if they end up in a bind.
Okay. Is everyone comfortable with it?
I think, I can finish this one.
Any other questions? Okay. All those, there is a motion in a second. All those in favor say aye.
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 Oppose, same sign?
Aye.
Okay. If that was one no. All right. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, counsel.
Okay. Next is adoption of the consent calendar. If there isn't any items that need to be pulled off this evening, I'll entertain a motion.
Second.
Second.
All right. All those in favor say aye.
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 Oppose, same sign? All right. Motion carried. And next, last page. So business from the council. And Bill, you're up on the top corner of my screen.
I'll see you tonight.
Okay. Dick, anything?
No.
Okay. Alex?
Public safety thing. I've seen a lot more cars as it gets darker, they're driving in dust with no lights on and you can't see them, especially when it's foggy like this morning. You need, we should be aware to turn our lights on. I've seen, there's a lot of accidents or possible potential accidents. You slide into a intersection or almost running, coming, emerging into traffic and the lights are not on. So we need to pay more attention to that, just to the public know that we need to do a better job of that.
Yeah. I think you brought awareness to that about three times now. And the last time you brought it up, staff did put out a Facebook page about it. I don't know if you saw, but that was good getting outreach on. So it was from a post from before, but we can try to be able to stress it. So good awareness there. Okay? Anything else? Okay. Rich?
Yeah. I guess the only, the only thing is, in the last couple of votes here, I think we owe our fellow man, wherever, whatever city they're in, to be fair. But that doesn't mean, from my perspective, that we ought to give them a bargain. We need to make sure that our rate payers are the ones who get the bargain, if there is a bargain to be had. And that more than anything else, that our costs are always covered. It bothers me greatly when we pay tax and somebody in someplace else gets the benefits when it is not reciprocal. That's all I had.
Okay. That I do agree with. So, on that. Okay. Let's see. Mike?
Yeah. It seems like West Albany, somebody likes to go and steal political signs down here. It's happened twice within the last month. Police reports have been filed, but it's getting interesting. If somebody doesn't like the sign that you're in your yard, they think it's their God given right to steal it because they don't agree with that individual's policy or that individual's vote, vote. Or anyway, I find it absolutely, absolutely atrocious. It's, yeah, reprehensible and immoral. Why, what gives somebody the right to go in somebody else's yard and steal a political yard sign that they don't agree with? Well, it's happened twice in West Albany in the last month, where somebody comes in in the middle of the night and starts stealing signs. So I think it's, like Rich said, it's atrocious. That's all I got.
Okay. I agree. I've had, at Bircham's Metals, three times this week, mine were knocked down and Sheriff's Levy was busted and everybody else's was standing. And I had another contact today, another one of mine was stolen. So it's kind of happening to everybody.
I hope we catch these people that are doing it and, and prosecute them to the full extent of the law.
Mm-hmm. Yep. Well, hard to do, but yeah. So, I don't know if I've had quite a few, but, okay.
I heard a bunch of those signs ended up at the police station, if you want them back.
Yeah. I didn't have any of mine there, but, but mine have been knocked down, stolen, so. But it's par for the course. Every candidate goes through that.
Yeah.
Okay, Bessie?
Yeah. And I apologize. I was, I thought that the Republic Services was not on the consent calendar and a separate item. Because I wanted to say that I've heard from quite a few people about the, the garbage police, about the recycling. And I just think that if they start charging people for maybe getting a wrong thing in their can, that you're not gonna have people recycling. They're just gonna throw it in their regular garbage and just say, forget it. So I, I don't really think that's a good idea. I really don't. And so that's all I have. Thank you.
Okay. All right. And I didn't have anything this evening. So Peter, did you?
Yes, mayor, just two things for you. You, you may have heard today that the state legislature appropriated $30 million for hotel purchases in the counties that have been affected by wildfires. I, I understand they're calling this Project Turnkey. And Commissioner Tucker, from the Lynn County Commissioner, Commission called me today to let us know that he's working on, on effecting some kind of arrangement that would take advantage of these monies to help people displaced by fires. So we will, we'll stay abreast of that and will be, he's affording us the opportunity to be involved as they come up with a solution to, to that problem. And there'll be more.
So Peter, with that, I had heard that if it is, say, government funding when it comes to hotels, that they can't charge the hotel tax. Did, have you heard anything like that?
You know, I, I, I have not heard that, but I, that would not surprise me because it's not, at that point, it's not a hotel. It's, it's temporary housing. So, but we'll find out more and we'll bring back to you whatever we learn on it. So.
Right. Yep. I think we need to know because if it is, if our hotels are being utilized and then we don't have room for guests coming in, that's gonna make our TLT revenues even less.
Right. Right. The only other thing was that next Monday evening, we anticipate being able to provide you with the questions that will be asked on the next community survey. And that, the aim is to have that community survey ready to be distributed sometime at the end of, of, of next week. Potentially maybe into the beginning of the following week. But you'll be able to take a look at those questions. And there are some discretionary questions that we have and also some questions that, that pose, find out information about COVID and how our citizens are dealing with, with the pandemic. So that'll be coming your way next Monday. And that's all I have, mayor.
Okay. All right. Is, staff have anything else? Anyone have anything else good for the order? Okay. All right. So we do have our work session on Monday. Then the next regular session is on the 16th because Veterans Day lands on a Wednesday this year. So with that, we're adjourned and have a good evening, everyone.